Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know, I'm the mayor of Desert Hot Springs. On behalf of our police department, who's actually called this town hall, I want to introduce our city staff to this side, our city council on this side, our police department behind me, and we have multiple officials from the Palm Springs Unified School District. We appreciate everyone that's here tonight that have concerns like we do. Do some housekeeping before we start. If you'd like to speak tonight, there is a sign up sheet up here. Our city clerk, she'll raise her hand. She's the friendliest person up here. She's the one that's going to take your name, and she'll call your name out. If you prompt a question at any time, please feel free to come up and sign up. We just want to kind of keep control of who's speaking. We have two microphone monitors on the side here. Due to COVID, we won't have you be grabbing the mics and running off with them, but they'll hold the mic for you to speak into. This is an opportunity for you to make comments or ask questions. The city, this is put on by the city of Desert Hot Springs, so from the city council and city manager's office, we'll be answering any general questions on city business. And from the police department, our police department, after their presentation, will be answering questions from their department. Palm Springs Unified is here to observe and listen, and most of all, that's what we're here to do, is let's listen. I'll mention it in what I'm going to say here in a few minutes, but I just want to make it very clear, our city council finds this very important. That's why you have all four members of the city council here tonight. This is not a council meeting, so there won't be any debate, there won't be any back and forth discussion. If they choose to say something, they'll be treated as an audience member, they'll come up and have three minutes to say something also, just so we don't violate any Brown Acts. Also, Officer Romero, raise your hand, there you are. If you need any translation in the room, she can help us with that. So if you do need translation, please let us know during your question that you'll need translation, and we can get that done for you, okay? I'm going to start off with a statement, and then I'm going to give it over to our police department. "As the mayor and as a parent, I am concerned with the ongoing violence that has been occurring at Desert Hot Springs High School since the start of the school year. We're hearing from students and parents that fights are occurring on a frequent basis. The most recent incident involved weapons and/or potential weapons, gang activity, and derogatory racial statements. We are a diverse community, and racism should not be tolerated in any form at any age. But there are ways to handle racist comments that do not involve fighting and hate. We are in a situation where students are fearful and parents hesitate to send their children to school. This is unacceptable and cannot continue. This is why the city of Desert Hot Springs, the only city in the Coachella Valley so far, is hosting a public forum, so you can speak your concerns, and for the Palm Springs Unified School District officials, the city of Desert Hot Springs officials, to hear your concerns. The city council acted in 2009, when gang activity was at its highest, to get a criminal injunction against gangs that were terrorizing our city. Operation Falling Sun was successful in sending a message to the gangs that we were taking our community back. Past city councils, and I am sure the current city council, in a partnership with the Palm Springs Unified School District and our schools, will not be opposed to spending every available dollar to move towards another gang injunction and/or social programs to ensure the safety of our children. We have community leaders and mentors, school officials, district officials, the police department, city staff, and our city council here tonight to show the community that partnerships are underway. And every day, we work to find ground that we can stand on to make this community safe. The reality is that it will never be perfect, but we can certainly try and build programs and partnerships that will mentor the kids that continue to be a problem, and protect the kids that are not the problem. We are here tonight not to point fingers and cast blame, but do we? Do we blame social media, video games, TV, movies, the city, the county, the state we live in? I don't have an answer to these specific questions, but again, I reiterate that officials are here to listen. It is very concerning that the Desert Hot Springs continues to be the media spotlight when these incidents are happening at multiple schools throughout the district, region, and state. We need to be a leader and make it clear that this won't be tolerated in our schools around the state, not just in our little city. This town hall was arranged as an opportunity for the community to come together to discuss the realities of the situations. We want to hear from parents, students, and communities, so that our police department can work collaboratively with the Palm Springs Unified School District to ensure the safety and well-being of our students on campus. The police department's commitment to student safety showed last Friday, when we as a city provided multiple officers to Palm Springs Unified School District at no extra cost to them to keep our students safe at Desert Hot Springs High School. We are not blind, and we understand that students will try to wait out our patrols and possibly take their issues to the streets, but our police department is engaged and ready. And I'm not talking about force. We're talking about what we're talking about tonight, which is listening, engaging with our kids and parents, providing resources, and the list goes on. But if a crime is committed, the consequences will need to happen. The school grounds are not free zones. If a crime is committed, our police department will take the proper actions. Now for the rules tonight. We always have to have rules, don't we? We're going to ask that you use decorum, meaning treating everybody with respect and listen. Foul language, threats will not be tolerated tonight. And when the speaker's called upon, as talked about at the beginning, there'll be a microphone person walking around with a microphone and holding that microphone, they're not going to let you grab it and take it. You'll be given three minutes, so everybody has a fair chance. Please ask your question or make your comment. Once the three minutes is up, the city clerk will say your three minutes are up. If you direct a question to the public safety, our police department will answer that. If you have a question directly for the city council, we will do our best to answer. I will do my best to answer on behalf of the city council, but if it's a deeper question, it obviously has to be debated, or our city manager will take notes and try to get you an answer. This is not a council meeting, it's spoke about at the beginning, that's why the council members will be up here to listen but not answer. If they do feel that they need to speak to you, they'll have to speak in public comments, because this is a town hall, not a council meeting, and we do not want to violate the Brown Act. Again, if you want to speak, sign up sheets up here, if it prompts a question, feel free to stand up and come on up and do that. Now, on behalf of the city of Desert Hot Springs, again, this is a forum for you, the parents, the community leaders, and our kids, to have a place to vent their frustrations, ask questions. I can't guarantee all the answers will be here tonight, but we're going to do our best to listen and try to partner with our school district on finding those answers for you. With that, I'd like to introduce Chief Jim Henson.
I'm going to have just a couple quick comments, but this is meant for you. It's meant for you to give us information that you're getting from your kids, and it's information to give to the school district, as well as the police department, as well as the city. So this is for you, rather than social media. You have everybody here. Crime at the high school is no different than crimes at other high schools, however, apparently we're... The news tends to show Desert Hot Springs as an issue. I want to tell you, I pulled stats from August through current, and before you get a little worried, we had 117 calls for service at the high school. However, 102 of those were officers doing proactive patrol. So that brings it down to 15. So the issue at the school isn't no different than any other school, however, we're focused on Desert Hot Springs, and the police department's focused on Desert Hot Springs. The gang activity is a city issue, as well as a school issue. It doesn't start at the school, it starts in the city, so we're aware of that, and the police department's aware of that. The two gangs that have been given us an issue, I will not name them, that's what they like. They like publicity, and we're not going to do that here. Enough's enough. We're here to try to address any issues you have. Just a little update, we are working closely with the school district. We're working together to solve this problem. We had a great meeting on Thursday, and so we are all focused. We have a school resource officer, we had one last year too, but unfortunately, he's not present at the police department for a reason that I cannot get into, but we have a new one that's starting. He's going to be going to two weeks of class, and then we are hoping he would be ready to start at the end of October, first November. Like I said, we're working with the school district. So we're all here for one purpose, and that's your children's safety at the school. They shouldn't have to worry about getting from class to class. And we're only talking about a handful of individuals. So we're talking probably less than 20 individuals that are causing these issues at the school. And unfortunately, due to legislation and things out of our control, we have to do things in a certain way. And unfortunately, we're at the pendulum where kids are kind of off limits to law enforcement, as well as the school district. 10 years ago is maybe way over on the other side, now we're seeing extreme, where kids are allowed to do whatever they want to do, but we are going to come together and stem the tide. Like I said, our school is no different than any other school. We've been highlighted a couple times, and the injuries were slight, if there was any. However, we are aware, and we're not going to allow any incidences that we are aware of go unpunished. We will investigate, and the school district is also helping us. And I cannot stress enough that the school district and the police department are working together. With that being said, I have Commander Lindsay, who is in charge of the detective division for the police department, and Commander Chang, who used to be Sergeant Chang, but today's his first day as commander, and so he gets to come to a meeting and answer some questions as the commander, but he's commander in charge of patrol. So we're all here. We will answer whatever questions you have, and we'll be as truthful, and as honest, and as transparent as possible. If we don't have the answer, we'll get them to you. But rather than post stuff on social media, this is your chance to actually speak to the officials and let them know what's going on at the school. So with that being said, we're ready to take questions.
First person to speak, Kristi Telgany.
They're going to bring a mic to you.
Good evening. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. I'm new to Desert Hot Springs. We just moved here this past April. My daughter attends Desert Hot Springs High School. She's a sophomore. We moved from the Corona area. I'm the new PTSA president this year. My daughter is in all honors classes, she came with high hopes. This high school is beautiful. And in the beginning of the year, I was disappointed, first weekend, hearing about that large fight and seeing it on film. The second incident, I was more scared. I'm an educator myself, junior high. I've taught in El Monte, Lawndale, Blythe, and Paris, most recently. This year, I'm not teaching. I'm at home with my kids for the transition. The second incident scared me. I did ask her, did she want to attend any other school, because we come from, we're in Lake Elsinore District, but I was worried about her. So instead, she said no. She loves across country, she loves her classes, she has connections with teachers, she has connections with students already, she likes Desert Hot Springs. And so that's why I started attending the PTSA meeting, because we plan to stay here. We are a large family with seven children, at home, five school age, and we do not intend on leaving. This is going to be our permanent home. And so rather than take a seat back and move her, which is what I've been seeing on Facebook, we decided we'd stay, and I decided I'd take on this. And I think we just need to come together, parents, staff, students, community, and change this, because this is our school, and it's a gorgeous school, and there are good educators there, and it sounds like there's great programs. And in any school, we just need to build up the culture and the community and go from there. That being said, after, come see me, so we can, you know, get together and join to do that. And that's it. My name again, Kristi Salinas Telgany, and that's it. That's why I came here tonight. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you for your comments, that was great. I failed to introduce the board trustee, member for Palm Springs Unified School District, John Derardi. I didn't want to put him on blast all of a sudden here, but I've got a lot of Palm Springs Unified School District staff, but he's actually the one that represents us as the elected official, as does our city council here, so I just wanted to make sure that was done.
Next up to speak, Erica Garcia.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Erica. I have two kids that attend the high school. My oldest is a senior, and my 14-year-old, which is my middle daughter, she just started, she's a freshman. We've also been in Desert Hot Springs for, shoot, my husband, he grew up here, and I've been here for over 10, I'd say 15 years. And we are very proud of our city, and I am definitely not proud of what's going on. My husband is the varsity softball coach at the high school, so we pride ourselves on Desert Hot Springs, and we pride ourselves on representing our school and our town in a good way, the best way possible. So both of my girls, as she said, are straight A, A-plus, I might add, honor roll students and have men. They were gate students as well, and so coming to Desert Hot Springs, we had offers, we had people that wanted her to come to Rancho Mirage, my oldest daughter, because she's good at softball. She plays softball and she does it well, she made varsity her first year. And we declined, because we want to be here in our town, and we want to play for our city, and we love where we are. And it's just disappointing, because I've been dealing with the school, Desert Hot Springs High School, since, like I said, my daughter's a senior now. And when it comes to, let me also say that I am the one that brought both situations to the news. Jake Ingrassia is the one that's helped me, been helping me since the first incident that she was referring to, two days, the second day of school, there was the all-out riot, which was the same people, the same students that initiated this incident that happened the other day. And I know for sure, because it was a friend of mine, her son was the one that it happened to. He was jumped by, I'd say, at least 15 students, as you saw in the videos that I sent to them. I'm sure you saw them, there's at least three videos that I sent to Jake Ingrassia. They showed different angles, but all depicted the same students. And I also sent the video to him with the riot that happened on the second day. And I'm going to refer to them as riots because of this, because that's what it seems like. And let me just say to you that I believe that not only, as she said, is it us parents that need to come together and be involved, but also, I feel as though the staff is a huge problem, because I have brought it personally to the staff members and explained to them that I knew this would happen. And I've told them over and over again, trust me, these people back here know me very well, very well, and they will continue to know me, because I have an eight-year-old daughter who we also would like to have attend Desert Hot Springs High School. And I refuse to take my kids out of the school, because this is happening. I think we need to change what's going on, and I honestly believe that it starts with the staff. And it's not so much the teachers, it's the administration. And I've brought these things to them before, and they've done nothing about it. They disregard my comments, thinking I'm just a crazy mom. So I think we all need to get together and make some changes, definitely. Starting with me now.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Hello, my name is Maria Arizmendi. I don't have kids at the high school, I have kids at the middle school. And two weeks ago, I reported something that happened to my son. I want to say, the principal didn't do nothing about the situation. I reported to the police station, and the detective called, said, "Kids touch each other at 12 years old." My son has a disability, and he was put to the side, because the principal didn't do nothing about it. He didn't even follow an investigation, and that includes the police too. Because when I talked to the detective, the detective said, "No, kids around that age touch each other." My son was being touched by a kid at middle school, and the teachers didn't do nothing. And all this happened during class. And I'm really upset, because like I said, my son is a disabled kid. And if this is happening in middle school, it's going to happen at the high school too. So I'm here because I want to protect my son and all their kids, and that's cool. Being bullied, being touched by other kids, and the school district is not doing nothing about it. I called the school district, reported, and it's been almost three weeks, they haven't called me back. So we have to do something as a community about all these situations, because now that I have this problem, I'm noticing that there's a lot of problems going in middle school. The kids don't report it, because the teachers are not listening to them. Girls are being touched by other kids, and the principal doesn't do nothing. Teachers don't do nothing about it. My son just got hurt again Thursday. They didn't even call me by another kid, again. This is not all right, and it has to stop. We have to teach our kids to respect other kids, and we need better principals, better teachers. Some teachers that they really want to teach kids and protect kids, not just their pension, like the teacher said at the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arizmendi. Gabriela Velt, next.
I want to look at the parents, if that's okay. Excuse my voice, I'm allergic. You know, I wasn't going to say anything today. I had my chance, October 5th, I was here speaking with council members and the police and everybody that's here today. And I also had a chance to speak in the news. And I wasn't going to, but something just occurred to me, and this is a little personal, but I think I must share this with you. We need to pay attention to our homes. A lot of this starts at home. It's very easy to point fingers to the teachers, and the principals, and the police, and the officials, but I might tell you something really quick. I have one daughter that she's wonderful. She's varsity cheerleader, sweet girl, I'm not just saying that, but back in the middle school, she was going through some problems, and she became not violent, but angry, and she was reacting to bullies angry, and she got in trouble, she almost got spelled from school. And you know what I did? I said, "I have to take responsibility for that." I seeked help. There's programs, counseling, they come to your house, and the county won't charge you a penny. It's got multi-dimensional, dimensional program. Veronica, she was an awesome counselor, she came to my house once a week and sat there at the table, spoke to my daughter, spoke to me, she gave me my time. My daughter was listening and meeting with her, she can meet outside of your house or in your house, and she graduated, and she is one of the sweetest, I can tell you the name, but I won't, because she'll kill me. But let me tell you something, if we can start at home, these kids are angry for a reason, and we need to look and see what's going on, so that we can help them, and then at the same time, you're helping their lives, you're helping other children, you're helping the schools, you're helping the teachers, you're helping the principals, you're helping the police, you're helping the whole city. There's help out there. So if you're a teacher and you're here, bring some of those programs more obvious in the school, so parents know that there is help. The mental health of our children is our responsibility, and it starts there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Velt. Storye Lantry, next.
I'm going to reiterate to what she just said. We have to start at home. We don't know what's going on in our children's homes. They could be going through abuse, they could be going through parents that are drug addicts. Anger comes out, it presents itself, because there's some hurt behind it. There's always pain behind anger. Our police are doing the best they can, in my opinion. Our teachers, in my opinion, are doing the best they can. I could not do their job. Period. This beating that we just all saw on television, this little boy, bless his heart and his There has to be a solution. We have dispensaries, marijuana dispensaries on every corner, every corner of this town. We've got money. The money is there. Let's put it in our schools, let's give it to the police departments, let's give it to our teachers, let's give it to the people that'll come to your home and speak with your children, and give them some therapy, if you can afford it personally. You know, blood is going to end up on somebody's hands, and I say that, you know, not literally, but hypothetically. And my son as well, has been through issues at home and are at school, and he's came home, and he said to me, "Mom," he'll be a senior next year, he said, "Mom." I said, "Son, you have a responsibility to report. If you know someone is on campus and they have a gun, or a knife, or a weapon of any sort, you have a moral and legal obligation to report that." He said, "Mom, you don't get it. They will come after us. They will find us, and they will do, they will hurt us, you, our family. You don't understand how bad it is." And it frustrated me, but he's right. He's right. It's unfortunate, he is right. And how sad is that? He's afraid to go to school. We have amazing students here, we have an amazing town here. They want to be in school, he loves school, he's a straight A student, he loves his teachers. And again, thank you to all the teachers, your efforts are... My heart just goes out to all the teachers here. You're doing the best you can with what you got. And the frustration is there with all of us, I'm sure.
Thank you, Ms. Lantry.
I just wanted to say that, I know my daughter, a lot of people know Milagro Bishop. She went through a lot of bullying in middle school. During the COVID, her biggest fear was starting high school, because the kids were bigger, and they weren't as big in middle school, but they're the same kids that were picking on her in there, that started picking on her in this year. And this is freshman. She was scared to go down one set of stairs to go to a class that's a shortcut, because there's somebody at the bottom of the stairs waiting for her. She is a special meets kid, and I don't want that put up on a cloud, it's just the fact that she's worked so hard to integrate herself and be able to be amongst the normal kids. But the normal kids are scaring the hell out of her. And she should feel free to go down whatever staircase it is to get to her class, because my daughter has hip dysplasia. So she's got to walk a mile and a half around to get to the next class that is literally at the bottom of the next stairs, about at the bottom of the stairs that she's being picked on. She is physically sick when I tell her she's got to go to school. She doesn't have a cold, she doesn't have a fever, she doesn't... We did this through middle school. We got to the middle school, I got her to the stairs, and she puked everywhere, because she was being bullied. In middle school, when I brought it to the school, the comment that I got is, "We didn't see it, so it probably didn't happen." Are you kidding me? Serious? So my response as a parent was, "Cool, I'm going to put her in self-defense, if you didn't see it, it didn't happen." Our kids shouldn't live like that. Our kids should not fear having to go to one class to another, or not even wanting to go, because there's a bully at the end of the... to go, because there's a bully at the end of the street. And I get it, I come from a broken home, I grew up in foster care, I get there's issues. But, I mean, then get all the parents together and figure it out. Because our kids don't have to suffer because somebody else's kids is suffering, too. And I understand that. So we've got to step up as parents and do something about it. Because it's our younger ones that are just, they're, when your kid doesn't want to go to school and she's a great student, what do you do? Because then I've got tardy, I've got the tardy people from PSU telling me, your daughter has to go to school. Okay, so then protect her. You guys won't let me on campus to protect her, you might not want to either. But, you know what I mean, the matter of the fact is, is that she doesn't feel protected. She doesn't want to go to school, and she doesn't want her mommy in every class either, and I sure as heck don't want to be there. So I'm giving you my kid to educate, keep her safe. We've got to do something as parents and faculty, we need to get together as human beings, from one adult to another. We all have children, and we all need to bring it together.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Michael Felt.
Hi, I'm Michael Felt. First of all, I'd just like to say that my wife and I believe in law and order. And just as one example, if we were to waive our traffic laws in this city, you know, I'd go faster, I bet most of you would. In less than a month, right, every intersection would be a death trap. People would be going 100 miles an hour, not everybody, but some people would just push it and push it and push it. That's what's going on in our schools. Because the, there's just no authority there. And, you know, people do bad things. The second thing I'd like to say is that we are blessed with an excellent police department. There are places that have had problems that we haven't seen because we have good police and good leadership. And we're very happy that this is at the point where the police are going to be able to get back into the schools, where they have authority and they have the force to be able to just put law and order back. But I also would like to affirm something that Chief Henson said, that it's, you know, we've got some good city council people, we've got some awesome police, but there's laws that are just insane. And we need to think about how we vote. We need to, if you believe in law and order, if you want your children safe, you need to vote for law and order, because a lot of this stuff is just raining down from the top. And these people don't believe in law and order. They don't seem to have common sense, and we need to, as voters, we need to have it for them. But I just want to simply say that I am very grateful for our police department and our officers. It's a difficult job that's gotten harder and harder and harder to do, and we should support our police. I'm grateful that we're at the point of having an officer back in the school. I hope that will make a big difference. And that's really my point.
Thank you, Mr. Felt. Michael Bucraba.
I don't know that I need that for sure. Hello, I'm Mr. Bucraba, most of you have probably heard Mr. B. I've been teaching for 29 years. I've been teaching in the desert, at Desert Hot Springs, actually, for 27 years, and I've lived here for 26 years. I have been a parent to many children there through fostering or one way or another. I wasn't going to speak since I worked for the PSUSD, so Joan, don't fire me. But as a community member and a parent, I felt, given some of the things I was saying, I really wanted to say a couple of things. So it might be unpopular, so forgive me. First of all, the teachers and the administration, we are doing everything we can for the parents that feel that nothing's being happening. I can't speak for the middle schools specifically, I don't work there, although I've worked with the principals and I think they're good men. I do work at the high school, and I'm in the unusual circumstance of not only being a teacher there since the school opened, so I've seen all the things. But I'm also the WASC coordinator, or was, rather, sorry, Dr. Cota, was the WASC coordinator, which means that I had an eye into what the district has been doing, what the principals have been doing, what the teachers have been doing, what the parents have been saying. Like, I helped write this report that said all the things. The only thing I disagree with the parents are, is that at least at the high school, for sure, it is not true the administration is doing nothing and the parents are doing, I mean, not the parents, excuse me, and the teachers are doing nothing. That is just not the case. It may feel that way. I promise you, as a teacher, it feels that way to me sometimes. But it's not the case, because I see what they're doing. Unfortunately, as the police chief mentioned, we have so many guidelines that bind our hands at the state level that, and I, forgive me, administration, but whether you're talking at the district level or the site level, our principals are middle management. They are following guidelines from the state level they cannot break. Even if you got rid of all the principals at all the middle schools and high schools in the valley, you'd replace them with people who have to follow the same guidelines. So what the police chief said is, when he mentioned hands being tied and laws, this, that, the other thing, the same laws that are, we're trying to protect the special needs kids in some cases, are protecting other students who you may not wish to have protection, but they have, they're under the same law. And they are doing, I promise you, they are doing their damnedest at the schools to do what they need to get done. I'm sorry, I said damnedest. Said it again, didn't I? The other thing I can just ask is media, and I'm going to be the bad guy here, too. I read the articles, I read Desert Sun, I see what you're posting, and some of what you're doing is spot on. You can't argue with the video. You can't. That happened. I was there, I walk around the school. I'm not arguing that at all. However, you, you write things like, the fights have been going up, the violence is going, which, again, is true if you compare it to two years ago or last year, when we weren't in school. However, if you do what's called, I think it's investigative journalism, you'll learn that the fights have gone down since the school opened. Things have been, things have been done. But what you're posting is not well researched, in my opinion. As somebody who's written a thesis, if I would have posted your, your articles, I wouldn't have a master's degree. So I'm just going to ask you to trot.
Thank you, Mr. Bucraba. Hope I said that right now. Alexandra Garcia.
Okay, I'm a student at the school, I've been here four years, I'm a senior. Since this, oh my God, we weren't here, I wasn't here my junior year, but I can say that, yes, this was one of the worst years that I think that we've had when it comes to fighting. The kid that was involved in the fight that got jumped, he's my boyfriend, he's, he, I'm not saying that he's a good kid just because he's my boyfriend, but he is, he's, this school year, he's done really well, he's been on everything, no fights, no referrals, nothing, he's had good grades, good attendance. And the school said there was no injuries in this fight. He did go to the hospital, he had a concussion, footprint on his head, not on the back of his head, bruised eye, nose. He was messed up. And the school district lied and said nobody got hurt, but again, he did. They're now threatening to expel him, so I feel that they are not being fair at all when it comes to punishing him. I do believe, yes, he gets the days to suspension, yes, he did fight. But I believe that this is not fair at all, that he's getting threatened to be expelled for defending himself. His friend also was in the fight, he's suspended, too, he was trying to help him, he was pretty much on top of him so that he didn't get as much hurt or more hurt, I guess. Um, I have something else to say. But yeah, the first fight, like she said, we knew all this was going to happen, we kind of figured that same group, they were cool, they were friends. At the end of the fight, he did lose his hat. One of the kids was taking pictures laughing with his hat on their head. That's not funny or something to do at all, I just think, yeah, they were at school the next day when I went to go pick up something that one of the other kids had lost. I seen them in the school, yeah, they sent them home, but again, I still seen the girls also that were also hitting him. In the video, you can see there is a girl hitting them. But if he would to have hit her on accident, it would have been a whole different story. I feel as if, again, something needs to happen to these kids. Not happen, but they need bigger punishments than what they're getting. That's undone.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Steve Giboney.
I'm a person who is not afraid to say what I really want to say, and I don't know if any of you know who I am, but I'm very, very outspoken. And I'm going to encourage you to do three things. One of three things are amalgam of them. One of them, the first one I'm going to tell you that I think you should do is not rely on these people to stop this problem from happening. I haven't heard anybody say that tonight, I was hoping somebody was going to say it, so I didn't have to say anything. The second thing is, I agree with the Felts 100%. Work at home. Help your situation with your kids at home. That doesn't mean that all parents are going to help their kids. So you're going to be put, your kids are going to be put into an environment where you don't know what radical kids might do. So you have to prepare your kids, and I have a 12th grader right now. She's not, no longer in the Palm Springs Unified School District because it's, this year is just awful. The third thing is homeschool if you can. Take them out, out of these environments and homeschool if you can, it's the best thing for them. This is getting bad. I don't know if you're aware of what's going on around the country, but crime is increasing. It's getting, Chicago had 100 deaths in one week. You know, they don't talk about that, do they? If you, if you notice the trajectory, things are getting a lot worse. Doesn't mean you have to live in fear, it means take matters into your own hands. Anyone who's known me over the years has known that I am for personal responsibility, personal empowerment. Don't rely on these people for what you need fixed, fix it yourself. Train your kids to stand up for themselves. Do not rely on them. They can't get enough cops, they have under 30 cops, they're paid for 34, they're down in the 20s, they can't have it. The criminals are getting rights, night and day now, they're getting, the chief said, you know, our hands are tied in a lot of situations, they're passing down legislations making it harder. In Portland right now, they're calling it a lawless city because the police were restricted, they can't use rubber bullets. I'm talking about a general macro view of what's going on today. It's getting worse. Doesn't mean you have to live in fear, it means take the responsibility in your own hands. They're smashing windows in Portland, and the cops are just standing back and saying, I'm not going to touch it. If you were a cop today, why would you intervene? You notice, you know what the media has done to these cops. They crucify them for doing things that are, so they just stand back now. So again, the last thing I'll say about this is that I believe this is part of a larger program to get more funding. If things devolve into chaos, get worse and worse, it's only better for government. Government can say, we need more money to fix it, and then it gets worse, need more money to fix it. It's a vicious cycle, and you see it happening. Thank you.
That was the last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
We do have another one signing up. If you've come in late, if you'd like to say a couple of words, feel free to sign up here. And after our speakers, we'll, we'll close in a few minutes. We have one more speaker.
Okay, so I work for the city, so I wasn't really sure if I should talk, but I'm glad the district's here. I have personal issues with the district. I don't have personal issues with the school, I don't have it with the staff, except for security. Our security at Desert Hot Springs High School runs away when something happens. When we call the district, nothing happens. I have two students at Paris, I'm sorry, that's where I went, at Desert Hot Springs. I actually transferred my children into this school from Palm Springs because of the violence, the gang violence in Palm Springs. My son was approached, asked what gang he was a part of, and when he said, that's silly, I don't deal with that, he was actually almost jumped that exact day. Two, two periods later, he asked me to pull him out. Not only did I pull him out for the day, I pulled him out entirely. When I went to the school, nothing was done. When I went to the district, nothing was done. When I went to Desert Hot Springs, explained my situation and why I transferred my kids, something was done. My kids want to go to school, they're not afraid to go to school, I'm sorry, not everyone has that. I want to thank our police department for doing what they do and having somebody there. Not only that, our security needs to do better at this school. They need to either be retrained or new security coming in. I'm not going to speak for all security because, because of one security member, one of the security members, I know about this town hall. So I applaud her for jumping in and talking to me when no one else will. I'm not going to mention names because I had my own situation with security with my I don't like to bring race into it, my kids are mixed. Unfortunately, when you look at a child, you don't see a mixed child, you see a black child. Unfortunately, we have that problem. Unfortunately, my son was cast as one of these kids who may or may not have been a part of something. That was his first day of school, he had, he didn't know anybody. So when I went to the school and approached him, talked to them, something was done, and I appreciated that. I appreciated the staff, just like you said, Mr. B. They are trying, they're doing what they're kid, we just need better security. And that's all I'm going to say with my four seconds.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more that wants to address everyone again.
Is it someone that's already spoke?
Yes. Ms. Landry.
Ms. Landry, everybody spoke, if I allow you a few more minutes, I'd allow everybody a few more minutes. Would anybody be opposed to having a couple of minutes? I'll give you two minutes, if that's fair.
Again, I just want to go back to starting at home. Our kids, it's our jobs, we're their parents. And I know there's families out there that children live in very hostile environments, and they can't go to their parents for help. I'm wondering if there's some kind of a program we can set up at the schools, a safe place for them, and some will and some won't reach out for that. I think it's a good idea. So they do have a safe place, they do all have counselors and whatnot. After my son told me that comment, it really hit me to my heart, I don't want to get emotional, but when he said, Mom, I can't give out names, you don't understand how many kids are on this campus with guns and knives, you don't understand. And they will use them if I snitch. And you'll be next. Period. And it's not the police department's fault, it's not the security's fault, they don't know what they don't know. These children need to speak with their parents if they can, if not, have a program set up somewhere at the school where they can have a safe place to go talk to somebody and feel safe. And then go from there. It starts at home, it starts with us, we're their parents, and that's all. Thank you.
We have one more speaker. Lindsay Vane.
Hi, good evening, my name is Lindsay. I'm new to the community, and the reason why I came this evening is because I met two high school students who flagged me down in a grocery store parking lot not far from their home and asked me, said I was approachable and I looked friendly and nice, and would I give them a ride home? And they only lived a handful of blocks away, which really surprised me that it was in the middle of the day and they were too scared to walk home. And I'm here because I offer a program that is all about inclusion, that And I'm here because I offer a program that is all about inclusion, that extends and branches out to our local authorities. And it is to, it's about inclusion, bringing people from all different races, background, social status, any, any profession, and doing it through acts of kindness and having fun. And I do this in very tumultuous situations where people, where there's anywhere from adults to children. And this is something that offers therapy and things that really I'm hearing the school also needs. I've worked with the high school in Los Angeles and other high schools around the world, other schools and organizations, and I, just being here and seeing the concern that the parents and students, and also why everyone is here, we, it's clear that we, the community does need to come together, and I'm not sure what all of the resources are, but I'm here to offer another one. It's fun, and it's also very therapeutic. It sounds like the school needs healing as well. It needs something that can bring, if it's only 20 students that are causing the ruckus, well, the rest of the students, let's bring them together and show them, the rest of the 20 students, how it can be done with, with kindness, with communication, and that's what I offer, our tools and resources and ways to do that. The program I offer is called The Play Way. We do things from the language of play. And you guys can reach me, my phone number's 213-706-PLAY. That's all I have to say. I thank you guys for your time and concern and for showing up. I do also agree that it does start at home, and let's branch out from the home and let's involve our schools and our local authorities. Let's have some fun and create kindness and a platform that we all can talk openly and with respect and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vane. We have two additional speakers. Tabitha Cunningham is up next.
So I have not only my daughter, but I have two nephews, I have my cousins, three kids or two kids that go there at DHS HS. They're afraid to go to school after these fights. They shouldn't be. They should feel safe when they go to school, and I am really afraid it's going to end in a school shooting. This is not okay. Somebody needs to do something. And this, people have come to the school district several times, and nothing's being done. Quit sticking your heads in the sand and do something. You got to do something before kids start dying because of this. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sam Cuccinello.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. I just have a question actually for the chief and the school district, because I, this is a question I actually cannot get a straight answer on. Do we give truancy tickets anymore? Because I will find students in front of Desert Hot Springs at all hours of the day, particularly 7-Eleven and stuff, and I believe, I'm an old school guy. I believe in the slippery slope. I think once we stopped on the truancy tickets, I think once we stopped giving them tickets for having marijuana, I think all that just all leads to more and more and more and more. And I think if there's an issue with gangs and whatnot, I would like to, I mean, no student should be out of school walking in front of it or at the 7-Eleven. So I'm just curious, is there a policy, do we give truancy tickets anymore or not?
No, that, that program, especially with school COVID hitting, that hasn't been addressed. There, there are some issues that the police department needs to work on, that's one of them. The other issue that I'd like to let parents know that we need to address is after school, the, the traffic issue. And, and we are going to start addressing that before someone gets hurt. We have kids running across the street, not using the, the crosswalks and stuff like that. So that's something that we were, we will look at. The other issue that we were going to start addressing is the after-school gathering in front of 7-Eleven. That's another issue. Obviously, parents need a pickup point. However, that becomes a gathering, and fights end up occurring there, too. So we are aware of those two issues, and we're going to work on those. I'll, I'll look into the truancy stuff and see what we can do, but we are, we are going to have the school resource officer back, and we will work with the school district, and that's a good point, and we'll look at that.
Thank you. Next is Brenda Montoya.
Hi, my name is Brenda. My son was the one that was being jumped at the school. The school, actually, they never called me. It was almost 45 minutes by the time I got home that I called the school. They never contacted me and told me that that had happened to my son. The second day, I had to call them to give me a report of what happened to my son, and I went personally to pick up the paperwork. I had Ms. Johnson, she, all she gave me was a sticky note saying it was mutual combat because my son hit that kid one time, and then everyone jumped him. And I had Mr. Wilson, when I was there speaking to him, telling him that I had to get my son up, he couldn't even get up from bed. I had to take him a shower, and all he did was just laugh on my face. He just, "Oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh, but I just don't know how to take this situation." When I was there crying in front of him, and he laughed on my face. Like, the school staff needs to be more professional. You need to take your job more serious. If you don't like your job, don't work there. There's worried parents, there's parents that need a phone call. If something happened to, to anyone's son, the way it happened to me, you would totally understand that the staff need to take their jobs serious. I went to the district because she gave me no paperwork, and I went to the district and I had the principal that had to get a hold of me. Nowhere was she, nowhere to be found. I only had Mr. Penigra that actually gave me a call and told me, "Oh, your son's going to get, um, we're trying to get him expelled from school because he hit, threw one punch." He was defending himself. My son has a closed eye, he's bruised everywhere, he has bumps in his head, and they want to expel him. I don't think that's fair. So please, give me a call back, whoever the principal is, because this needs to get addressed. My, you need to hear my son's voice. His, his part of the story, it's not right what's going on at that school, and please fix it. Get better security guards. Security guards, I have videos, they're, they're hesitating. One female security guard was the one that was trying to get all those kids out of, away from my son. All the other ones are just moving around, not knowing how to grab, how to start grabbing all those kids away from him. That is not right. Please fix it.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any more speakers listed.
A lot of passion in the room tonight, and again, as mayor of Desert Hot Springs, it's, our school zones are not free zones. And I do think that Palm Springs Unified School District understands that. I'm not here to speak for them, but I know there's a partnership, and the partnership starts with us here at the city of Desert Hot Springs, with our city council. Councilmember Betts is raising his grandson in our schools. Councilmember Nunez moved here a couple of years ago and now has all, all your kids in our school. Councilmember Jam Pie had her daughter go to school here. My two boys went to school here, and now my three stepdaughters are in school here. Gary, you got to have some kids. See Mr. B back there, he's gonna, he's, he knows how to adopt kids. I know that, I know that it's, it's passionate, and I don't mean to make fun of anything because your passion is important to us here in the community. And like I said at the beginning of this conversation, we are the only city in the Coachella Valley right now holding this forum for our kids and our community because we think it's important. Our staff is here from our city manager's office, and our deputy city manager, she has, she has children that have gone to school and in school today, and as you saw from one of our staff members who stood up, that she has kids in our school system, and that's only a handful of what you know are here. So it is very important to us to keep our kids as safe as possible and try to divert any type of violence. It's never going to be perfect. There's a lot of food for thought tonight, listening, and, and I know I have a great partnership with John Girardi, our trustee, and I know he's, he's got a lot of notes and, and we're going to, we're going to work on some of this stuff. I saw some hands raised.
We just want to give a statement from the district.
You may do that.
Good evening, I'm Laura Musso, I'm the executive director-
I'm going to get you a microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Laura Musso, I'm the executive director for Student Services in the Palm Springs School District, and we're here tonight listening to all of your concerns. I've taken a bunch of notes to bring back to our executive cabinet about your concerns. I know as a parent, your first concern is your child's safety, and I appreciate all the comments tonight. I like the partnership. It is our responsibility to all work together to make sure our students are safe. Working with the police, the city, the school administration, and the district, we're here to problem solve and work together going forward. I also want to share with you that I oversee the discipline in the school district, and it is everywhere, in the city, in the state, and in the nation. Coming out of the pandemic, we're dealing with anger, hurt, and mental health. Our schools provide social, emotional lessons for your children and mental health services. If your family needs that support, thank you for speaking on that, please reach out to us. It takes all of us. Our teachers are working hard, our parents are working hard, the administrators work hard, but it does take all of us. Thank you.
Chief, is there anything you'd like to add at the end here?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out. We listen to everything, and my staff will be here until the last person leaves, so thank you once again, and use the police department. But like I said, we, we had a real conversation this week with the school district, and we're all on board. We're going to make sure your kids are safe. So I appreciate everybody coming out. Maybe we do this again a little bit later to see what kind of improvement we have, but I really do appreciate everybody coming out, and we'll stick around in case you have any individual questions.
And again, thank you from the mayor's office to the city council on behalf of all of us. We really appreciate you. We will have all these town halls again. On Thursday, the Greater Coachella Valley will host the State of the City, which is not just about our schools, but it's about where our future is going with the, with the city. It'll be live and videoed, so if you cannot attend, it is free if you do, do want to attend. That'll give you an outlook of where our city's going. Our city council, I think, have taken a lot of mental notes, if not physical notes, and at the next council meeting, which is tomorrow night, and their comments, they might have comments about tonight. That can always be watched on YouTube. This was live on YouTube on our city website, and we know there's a lot of people that don't want to come to our council meetings because they're, you know, boring. But if you do want to watch us and hear a lot of these comments, sincere comments, I'm sure will come from our city council. Again, on behalf of the city of Desert Hot Springs and our police department, thank you.